First meeting or second meeting?
Have your attention, please. We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board meeting for February 20th, 2025. The first matter on the agenda is the approval of the February 3rd, 2025 minutes. Any of the board members have any corrections?
No, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
You've got a motion on the floor. We have a second?
Aye, second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote yes. In the opposition, here is none. Those minutes are approved. So tonight's meeting, we have a public hearing for 50 Payne Street Site Plan Review. Green Tree Properties LLC has applied to Lowell Planning Board to convert an existing livery business depot at the above address to 24 townhouse-style residential units. The property is located in the traditional mixed-use zoning district as well as the multifamily overlay neighborhood zoning overlay district. The project requires site plan review under section 11.4.2 for construction of a structure with more than three dwelling units. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Gary of Gary &amp; Gary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Green Tree Properties LLC. With us tonight, we have Andrew Tang. Andrew is the principal of Green Tree. He's the owner and the applicant. We also have Matt Hammer of LandPlex. As the chairman mentioned, we're here tonight seeking site plan review relative to the redevelopment of 50 Payne Street into 24 townhouse-style residential units. The property consists of approximately 45,760 square feet of land, properties located in the multifamily, I'm sorry, the traditional multifamily zoning district, and as the chairman mentioned, also in the multifamily overlay district, neighborhood district, the MFON district. And because we're in the MFON district, the use of the property as proposed in 24 residential units is an allowed use as of right. Otherwise, this application is zoning compliant. We are just here tonight seeking site plan review. We do not need a special permit. We do not need any relief from any other boards, for that matter. We do need to present before the Conservation Commission at some point. In advance of tonight's hearing, we have provided the detailed site plan. We have provided the architectural plans, which include the elevations, the floor plans, and a rendering of the property. The previous use of this property was the location of a depot for a livery business. That business has long been abandoned. The buildings on the site are dilapidated and unfit for any use whatsoever. The lot is overgrown and unkempt. The property is located at the, as you all know, the property is located at the junction of Payne and Saunders Streets. It's adjacent to Clemente Park, just to the south of this property, and to the Upper Pawtucket Canal to the north of the property. The Greater Lowell Boys and Girls Club is just to the east of the property. The general character of the neighborhood has quite the industrial feel to it. The properties along Sanders and Payne Street are auto body, auto repair, auto sales businesses. In terms of the residential character of the business, I would suggest that any residential properties in this location are predominantly multifamily properties. In terms of the layout of the buildings, we are proposing three buildings. The first building, starting from the easterly side of the lot, the boys' girls' club side of the lot, will be a building consisting of nine units clustered in three units each. The middle building will be, will consist of 13 units with three clusters of three and one cluster of four. Those two buildings, all the, within those two buildings, all the units will be offset from one another to break up the facade. The last building will be, will consist of two units, and that will be a typical duplex style condex building. Each unit consists of a single-car garage. Each unit also will have decks on the back of the property on the second and third floor. The second-floor deck will have access down to the ground level by way of a spiral staircase. The units are spacious. They consist of 2,100 square feet, four bedrooms, and two baths each. The applicant's intent here is to develop a condominium association and sell off the units as they're constructed. And, you know, the hope is that most, if not all, of the units will be owner-occupied when sold. My narrative goes into pretty good detail as to how this application meets the criteria for site plan review pursuant to 11.4. But I'll take a few minutes. I'll summarize, and then Matt will dive into the engineering a little bit deeper when he reviews the plans with the board. So in terms of the traffic flow and safety, we're providing adequate and safe pedestrian and vehicular access through and around the site. We are proposing a 22-foot-wide drive aisle that begins at the junction of Payne and Saunders Street. Drive aisle is sufficient enough to allow for easy maneuverability in and out of the parking spaces, the garages, and it also provides for safe, for easy, or sufficient, I should say, fire and public safety, safety access to and from the property. And as the site plan depicts, we are also proposing a walkway along the southerly property line as it abuts to the park for safe pedestrian passage through the site. With regard to parking, section 9.9.5 of the ordinance requires that we provide at least one-half parking space per dwelling unit. So based on the 24 units we're proposing, that would equate to a total of 12 parking spaces. We are providing, proposing 46 parking spaces. So 22 of the units will have two parking spaces. There will be a parking space in the garage, and there will be a parking space in the driveway. The duplex units will, the units in the duplex will have one parking space within the garage. So we far exceed the parking required pursuant to the ordinance. In terms of adequacy of utilities and public services running to the property, we intend to tie into the city of Lowell sewer and water lines that exist, and there is, there is adequate access to natural gas and the electric utility to the site. Because of the number of units involved in the proposal, we need to provide for private trash pick, trash and recycling pickup. That will happen by way of a contract with a private trash and recycling contractor. Any external lighting, which we are proposing external lighting on both the front and the rear facade of the, of the units, will need approval, review and approval from Steve Stoll, the Historic Board Administrator pursuant to the historic permit. So that will be, that will be vetted through Steve. In terms of landscaping and screening, so the site plan does show some landscaping elements to it. However, after review of the comments and further discussion with DPD staff, we have, we have decided that it would be in our best interest to, to hire a landscape designer. So to that end, we have hired Angie Verge of Angie Verge Landscape Design to create a landscape plan that will factor in all the elements of screening and landscaping that would be required. Angie has worked with me and on other projects within the city. She, her plans are well-received by DPD, so we are confident that we can propose a landscape plan that meets the standards of DPD. And as the comments mention, DPD would like any landscape plan conditioned upon their approval. We're, we're happy to accommodate that, of course. In terms of snow and ice management, you know, that will be done by way of a private contract. There may, there's, there is some storage for snow on the property, but, you know, as is the case in most, most developments, at some point, you may need to remove snow from the property, and that will just be part of the contract. As I said, we've provided detailed architectural plans, including the floor plans and the elevations, but because we're in the downtown Lowell Historic District, those architectural plans are required to be approved by the Historic Board. So to that end, we were before the Historic Board on December 9th. At that meeting, the Historic Board voted unanimously to issue the, I would say unanimously and enthusiastically, to issue the special permit, to issue the historic permit. I provided a copy of that recorded historic permit for the board's reference. In terms of the stormwater and sewer utility tie-in, I'll leave that to Matt for the most part, but I'll, I'll suggest that the connection to the sewer system in this location is very, very challenging. We had some meetings with the, with the wastewater team, and as it turns out, this particular sewer line within the city during periods of intense rainfall backs up, you know, comes back out of the sewer system, and it's problematic in this area for other, other sites within this area. But, you know, in working with the wastewater utility team, Matt has come up with an innovative solution that the applicant, the developer, has agreed to incorporate into his infrastructure, into the project. It's a very expensive fix, but really, it's the only way we would have been able to tie into the sewer line, which is very unusual in a city. But nonetheless, we believe that we've solved that problem, and Matt can discuss that in a little bit more detail. With regard to the staff comments in general, they are supportive of the project. They point out that the property will provide much-needed housing, that it will renew an underutilized area in the city, and that it will coincide well with the redesign and redevelopment of Clemente Park. The building commissioner notes that he has no issues. It looks like a good project for a troubled area. Transportation engineer points out that we should, we should install no parking signs along the south side of the drive aisle. I believe the fire department is looking for that as well, so we're happy to accommodate that request. But it seems to me that the, the project management team's chief concern regarding the, the project is the access, the public access from the park through this site to the potential site of the Upper Pawtucket Canal Walkway. So to that end, I've had further discussions with Sarah Brown, who heads up the PM team for the city. I, we had a Zoom meeting this morning. And as you note in the, in the comments, the city is proposing that the ideal location for the access for the public to the canal walkway is right in the middle of this project. I expressed to Sarah that that's simply untenable. We can't, we can't allow for that for many, many different reasons, least of which are liability issues, public safety, insurability issues, saleability of the potential units, and it allows the public to walk right between two units, which is, is less than ideal. So we had that discussion. Sarah certainly understood my concerns. She expressed to me that from the city's perspective, they need to avail themselves to whatever funding they can in terms of design and construction of this walkway. And to do so, they need their access points to the canal walkway to be ADA-assessable. So, you know, we understand that as well, but from the developer's perspective, what we can do is provide the access. We can't necessarily solve the ADA compliance problem that may or may not exist here. You know, I suggested that, well, perhaps you could, you know, redesign that portion of the park so you have, it becomes ADA-compliant down into our site. They're well along in their design of, of the redesign of Clemente Park, and they, I don't think that they want to change that, and I get that. But again, from a developer's, developer's perspective, I think it's, we can provide the access. We're willing to even, even deed that 12-and-a-half-foot corridor that we show on the site plan to the city so that when the time comes, they can design and construct whatever works for them. But I think it's unreasonable to ask the developer to deal with the ADA-compliant issue of that. Sarah did ask that we, Matt, take another look at our grading, grades to see if there's anything that can do to make that transition area from the park to our site ADA-compliant. We looked at the grades. It really doesn't work. We can't lift our site up in that location. It just really doesn't work. So in any event, we can, we can get back, go dive deeply, deeper into this during the discussion period of this hearing. But for now, I'll leave it at that, and I'll, I'll turn it over to Matt so he can go through the plans for the board. Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Matt Hammer with LandPlex Engineering and Surveying, 10 George Street, Lowell, Mass. So here we are. We're at a, at a location that stems from the end of Saunders Street and Payne Street with this notch configuration that ties us in this lot into this corner. This property here is 45,668 square feet. Right now, there's a very large building here that's currently being used, or was being used for taxi service. It was an old foundry there at one point. And there's also another garage building back here, and that, and the way that you could get there is this is paved, broken pavement, concrete, and you would drive around this backside, and this is all developed area with a mixture of gravel and pavement. There's also an area over here that's, excuse me, brush area, but virtually the entire property is either filled or been developed at this point. And the grades are such that the, the grades send all the water into the canal right now. There's also a strip of land here, which is the proprietors of Locks and Canals that runs along the canal. And that's what separates this project from the canal. There's a auto body station here. There's an auto body station here, and there's the Clemente Park here and the Lowell Boys Club adjacent to us. I'm going to put the colored plan up, which is a little bit easier to see. So as Attorney Gary already went through the buildings, there's three primary buildings. There's an access drive, and there's a, a drive connecting to a garage underneath all the units themselves. These buildings here have a parking space in front of all the units, and those are all separated with individual landscaped areas. It's 22-foot-wide drive with a porous pavement sidewalk going along the entire length of the property. And then this point right here is the area where there's an emergency turnaround in order to have the maneuverability for a, a fire truck to fully turn around. I met with the deputy fire chief yesterday just to go over the plan, and there's an email that has been generated showing that the, the fire department is satisfied with this configuration of the emergency turnaround access point. Additionally, there's going to be a fenced-in dumpster area there, which will also make it very easy for a, a dump truck to come and empty the trash in this location as well. This location also is going to be where we're going to have, right now, we have two mailbox areas that will service the mail for all the units in one area. So that'll be also an additional location for the mail to be delivered. The duplexes will be delivered separately from that spot. The, the 12-and-a-half-foot access point has been shown here down at the end of the property. We had some preliminary discussions with DPD as we normally would, and it was determined that this was the ideal location at that time to put the access drive down at the end, and that had a direct connection to the park, and we had, originally had configured a set of stairs to show how you would get down to that area from Clemente Park. And that's 12-and-a-half feet here that would bring you to the proprietors of Locks and Canal property. There's also an area between the duplex in this building, which is a very important area to the city, and that is, is that this is a low point of the drainage system for this entire region. So there's a, there's currently a pipe that goes through this easement area that we're going to, there wasn't an easement, but we're providing an easement. And when the, the drainage overflows, the water actually wants to go to the canal through that pipe that's within that easement. I don't know how much you want to know about all the engineering. It's my favorite part. But we are providing full infiltration drainage for all the impervious space with a set of infiltration trenches in here, with a full catch basin system and drain manhole configuration, and everything is graded in order to accommodate the drainage. And then this area becomes a very busy area down here, where we've been discussing with the city in order to not exacerbate the current drainage and sewer combined configuration that's in the area. So what happens when you get a severe storm? There's a temporary time period where the system is maximized in terms of its capacity, and we've developed a system where our sewerage will go into a separate tank to not add any flow to that system that may be at capacity. So our systems are not impacted in any way with the city's systems that are impacted in this area. So essentially, we have a, an 8,000-gallon tank. There's a sensor already in these manholes that know when there's a, a problem arising with the water gaining an elevation within the system, and it'll send a signal to our tank to close a valve, and then all of our sewer will be able to be put into our tank. And then when the rainfall goes down, we would then pump our flow back into the sewer system at a later time because we don't have to put it in right away. We could wait a time period, and that became a solution to the city's problem. The city is going to be undergoing a massive sewer drainage separation project over the next 10 years, and that this area is one of the first areas as a priority that are going to be separated. So this will be a system that will only be needed for approximately four or five years. And we're working closely with this design, with the city, to ensure that, that what we're installing here is not going to interfere with their project coming up as well. And that's my presentation. I can show you the units. This is a perspective drawing, showing what the units would look like from the access road. That would be this perspective. And this would be the perspective on the canal side, which is essentially on, just on the other side of the canal from the, from the Western Ave Studios building in that parking area that's adjacent to it. These are elevations, inside elevations of the units. There's a, a mixture of texture on the siding to give it some depth. So it's not one uniform style of siding. So you have vertical siding. You have a, a shingle siding, and then you have a clapboard siding. So you have three different configurations on the group of three units comprised of each building. And this is the duplex building here. The front, the sides, and the rear. So they're going to be very nice units. They're spacious. And they will be waterfront.
Both sides?
But, which is, which is nice, right? So you get a, a public park on one side, and you have waterfront on the other side. So it, it's, it actually is going to be a pretty high quality of living comparable to other residential units.
Matt, could I just ask you to put up the color drawing you had a little while ago?
This one?
Yes. So I know Attorney Gary and yourself talked about the transportation comments and the fire department comments. They indicated what they want, and no parking. Can you fill that?
Yes. So what we're going to do is Yes, so what we're going to do is, there needs to be a no parking sign here, okay? Now, if we're all familiar with this area, we know that the auto body businesses use this area as a place to just store their vehicles. And you cannot safely maneuver around that corner.
Right.
So the fire, the deputy fire chief was saying that when this duplex goes in, that'll actually eliminate that problem out front where there are parking cars currently here, okay? Conversely, the same thing will happen here. So they're not going to have that problem of the vehicles just being stored down in the corner there. So that's number one. The second thing will be that there'll be signage along this area here as well as in their homeowners association documents that would prevent anyone from parking on this access drive. And that would be the signage.
So the signage that will be on Saunders Street will be on the condo?
Right here.
Okay.
Like typical signage, right?
Yeah.
There'll definitely be one right here. There should probably be one right here.
Yeah.
That would be normal, just from parking so that you're not within 10 feet to here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless you get the sight line coming in and out.
Yep. In the way that the pavement is here and everything else, I mean, we have sewer lines that actually go through this property. They never even got put into the right-of-way. So during the sewer drainage separation, there's going to be some other configurations potentially with the infrastructure in here when they go to rip up the roadway and then repave the roadway and whatever improvements would be part of that work. So that's, that's going to be anticipated as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Matt. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we believe that we meet the standards as articulated in section, the design standards as articulated in Section 9.9 of the ordinance. We're providing a high-quality residential development. And by doing so, we're creating additional housing in the city. We meet all of the criteria for issuance of the site plan pursuant to Section 11.4. And we are respectfully requesting approval of the site plan that's before you this evening. So with that, we're happy to address any questions or concerns that the board or the public may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. At this point in time, I'll open the meeting up to the public. At this time, we'll start with anybody like to speak in favor of this project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Wes Nuneun, I live on Tann Gibson Road. I'm frequent of that Clemente Park. Actually, I was one of the advocate in term of putting the light there, getting the city to turn the light on there in 2012. When it was not successful in that, I ran for office. And when I get in, three months later, the light's there. So I know quite well that area. I strongly support this project, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I truly believe that this project will clean up what's there now. This project will also add to the housing stock that was short in the city. This project will help with the external light that Attorney Gary was talking about, that is going to help at night when the park light is off. Put in some light there, deter any criminal activity that may or could happen at that park. Thirdly, fourthly, this project's certainly going to add to the tax basis for the city. Going forward, I also see that some of the projects, some of the lot in the paying street could also be, something could happen there as well. It really could beautify that area. So I urge you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, to approve of this site plan review. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none at this point? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to the board members.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Vichet.
So it's funny, we were, we were talking earlier, we did look at a plan some, some years ago for this site. So it's nice to see something come, come before us that hopefully is going to come to fruition. I applaud the creative solution to the, the challenge of the sewage system with the development. That's, that's an interesting system. Hopefully, that'll, that'll function as, as designed. Just curious whether it will affect, will create any development challenges? Are there any environmental issues with the site that?
So, you know, prior, prior to purchasing the site, the applicant had a Phase 1 ESA completed on the site. There were no, there was some remediation necessary from what's inside the building, but no other issues.
Wow, I mean, that's great, I'm actually surprised, but that's good to hear.
We were pleasantly surprised as well.
The, and I saw again the design, you know, really, design falls on the historic board in this particular case. Saw the conditions that they had placed on their approval. I liked the articulation of the roof line. You know, I think it, I think visually, it, architecturally has some elements that, that we like to see in development. And then just, Counselor, just to go through it, because, you know, it's stacked parking, but there's actually more than 24 parking spots, right? Because, I mean, you've got
Forty-six.
Yeah, because you've got the parking, right, you've got the, the parking garages and then the spot in front, so.
Two of the units have two parks, 22 of the units have two parking spaces, 44, and the duplex each have one parking, so 46.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So, and again, you know, the, in this particular zone, and we've looked at this, but this, this does, in this zone, does have a required minimum, which you far exceed. So, you know, that's duly noted, and I think, I think in this particular case warranted. I think the driveline seems wide enough, you know, a little concerned about the snow storage, but I think it's 22 feet, so, you know, unless it really starts to accumulate. Is there any thought of in-between the buildings, those spots, would that be snow storage? Or no, really thinking it would just be in that driveline?
Yes, there is spots for snow storage, but I believe when you, when you think about it, you have 10 large storms at, usually on average. And what's going to happen is, is that they're going to actually just remove that snow.
Truck some of it out, yeah, that's what we've had.
Like a little one-inch rain event, one inch of snow or something like that, there's areas for that snow to go. They're going to need to, you know, remove the snow probably 10 times a year on average.
Yeah, yeah, if that.
Right into the canal.
Can't do that anymore.
No, that's, that's common in urban areas where there's no place to split the snow. So, and there's places where that snow goes, and it's all regulated, and there's a process for that.
Understood, understood. And I, again, I'm a firm believer with the park, and we, I noted this with other parks as well. The more eyes on the park, the safer the park is. So I like the idea of putting that, that space to use in a residential form. It's quite, we had quite a memo, extensive memo from DPD on the, on the easement. You know, I've been involved in a few of these. Counselor, in you being an attorney, probably I'd better just deed over that strip of land for the condo association, I suspect, but.
We're happy to do that, and it just, it allows the city to, to design and construct what they want when, when that time comes. We have no idea when that time will be. It's, it's years down the road, it's not two or three years, it's years down the road.
I mean, we've, we've approved, actually, we've approved some developments, and I don't think I was on the board at the time, but then it came back with, you know, an easement for access. And it was on the Concord River, and then they came back and to get it removed. You know, it just, it was problematic.
Yeah.
It was problematic.
I'd like to add, Jerry, excuse me. You can deed that 12-and-a-half-foot strip and not have it affect the permit as well.
Good, that's why I was wanting to ask far as
The land area or things of that nature, so that can be done as a, as a condition. And we could most certainly incorporate that into a, a plan of land to have that parcel donated to the city.
Just, I guess the city was interested in that when they entered the discussion.
That would be our preference.
Did, now, the, the, and I apologize to the person that you spoke to from the city, did they seem receptive to that, or?
My conversation was with Sarah Brown, who heads up that property management team that formed a couple of months ago. So she, so Sarah, Sarah's, the city's problem, not, not Sarah's problem, but the city's problem is being able to provide an ADA-compliant access way down to our corridor. You know, she, the, the design of the park is pretty far along, and they don't want to have to change that. So my suggestion was to her was, well, perhaps it would make sense, you know, you know, we deed this, this corridor to you. And down the road, when that time comes that, that something needs to be, be done, maybe you, you know, the funding will allow for a redesign of that portion of the park that would allow for ADA-compliant access. So she, you know, she didn't, she asked us to go back and look at our grades and see if there's anything we could do. We did do that, and there's really nothing we can do in that transition area between the park, the easterly side of the lot where the park meets our site, so.
Well, I mean, how big of a drop is that? I mean, not that I'm an engineer, but is it, it's?
Yeah, so you can ramp from that property up into their property, and you could gain approximately two feet. And then there'd be another six feet additional. So it's not, you say, ooh, but six feet, eight feet is not that hard to overcome in terms of grading.
What would be the distance to beat the, because it has to be, you know, the pitch can't be a certain
Well, it's just a matter of where you want to make a transition, create, you know, lose that grade over a walkway or whatever it may be, but I'm just saying that it's not, it's, it's not like it's, you challenge with 15 feet or 20 feet where it becomes more extreme.
Right.
It's just, you just got to keep excavating out into the park to make that transition.
Get to that, that distance you need to get the, yeah, the pitch. I mean, I'd honestly want to just leave you with some flexibility that you would be providing, you know, work with the city to provide access, but I honestly don't know the best way to, you know, from what the city feels would be, would be best at this point, but.
One of the challenges is unless you know what's going to happen, whether they even want the access to the National Park Service or whether the National Park Service even wants that access up to the park. And you know all the details of what everybody wants, it's tough to speculate about that transition area at this time.
Right.
You just don't have all the pieces to
Understood.
assemble that, that solution.
I would agree.
What I was told is that the, you know, the Upper Pawtucket Canal Walkway will happen at some point.
Yeah.
We don't know when, but it will happen at some point. It is referenced in the Lowell Forward Plan. But, as I said, we, we can provide that access, but we can't necessarily solve the ADA compliance issue. You know, we're, we're working with the city as best we can. But I don't, I don't, I don't think we can have the corridor anywhere else on the site. I think that makes the most sense. There's, it would be a clear delineation between the corridor and the units as opposed to going through the middle of the unit.
Yeah, from a practical sense, somebody that deals with financing on that, anything else, from a practical sense, it's, yeah, I get it. Yeah, I understand that. And then the trash pickup, private trash pickup, how do you envision is, so is that truck going to go down and then turn into between the two buildings, or how is that going to?
That's exactly what they're going to do.
Okay.
They're going to come in, they're going to go straight in.
Yep.
Front load in.
Yep.
And then they can back out and come out.
Just like the, I looked at the sweep path analysis, and I figured that's basically where they're going to follow.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, yeah. All right, I have no further questions or comments. Other than the fact that, again, it's nice to see the, the site being developed. I think it'll be complimentary to the area. I think it'll help even make it a little safer as well. And it's underutilized, we talk about tax dollars as Counselor Wes Nuneun had indicated as well. I mean, it's certainly going to put quality housing on the tax, on the tax roll as well. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vichet. Attorney Tenzar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first reaction to this project was, it's great to see a developer looking out for the city as well as themselves. I think that's important when, when we ask both the developer and their counsel to look at things from a city view. And I think they did that by putting sufficient parking. I mean, you've got, what'd you say, 2,100 square feet, you've got four bedrooms, two baths. There's going to be a fair number of people in there.
Yeah, this is huge units.
Yeah, they're good-sized units, and as a result, this is appropriate, despite what the zoning says. That's another story. Can you tell me, I was looking at the side diagram of the house or the units, and I couldn't figure out, because they're tiny, I couldn't figure out how tall they were. Because I've got something that looks like it goes from ground to halfway up the roof that looks like it says 34. Is that what it says?
Yes, it was elevation.
Yeah, and how, how tall is that?
That is 27 feet here. And it's kind of below the maximum height requirement.
35.
Maximum height is 35 feet.
Right.
Reporting at 34.5.
Okay, and where does that indicate on any of these diagrams that it's only 34 and a half feet tall?
It's on the zoning chart.
No, I hear that. But on, on these, where you're measuring these buildings, where, where does it indicate it's only 34 and a half feet tall? Or, or does it?
Well, it does, here, on the elevation here.
Okay.
There's 34 feet, 60.
Okay. So that looks like it's just this peak, right?
Yeah, that's, it's, it's down the midway of the, of the gable.
Okay. So what about the roof, what about the rest of the roof?
That's how the calculation's done.
It's done halfway, halfway up the roof?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And Member Tenzar, I had confirmed that we were within the height requirement with the architect prior to the, prior to the historic board meeting.
Okay.
So he did, the architect did confirm that.
All right, it just looks odd that it's supposed to be 35, and it's 34 and a half halfway up the roof.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. On your narrative, it indicates on the site plan, we were talking about snow removal, and I couldn't find it. And, and maybe it's just me, but I looked through all of the different things, and I didn't see any spot that said "snow removal" or "snow storage."
Yeah, I don't think that it is specifically characterized there. But we do have, you know, the, the locations between the, the center of the building, we have that area between the duplex and the, and the other building. We have the end of the drive aisle as well. So we don't, there's not a ton of, you're, you're correct, there, it's, I don't think it is identified on the site.
Okay, all right.
But there are locations.
Okay, and I did hear your explanation is, hey, look, at a certain point, we're going to have to truck, if there's a significant storm, we're going to have to truck it off, off the premises. I did hear that. So, okay, I, I, look, I'm just reading through these plans, and I just didn't see it. Bear with me. Okay. Now, one of the things you said was, is we're hoping that these are owner-occupied condos. And, and so is there a possibility that they're going to be rented by the developer?
No, there's no possibility of that.
Okay.
The hope is that, you know, and I would think in a development like this with this style unit, 2,100 square feet, it's going to be owner-occupied, it'd be very unlike, not, not really an investment property, right?
Sure.
So the, my point is, it's our expectation that the units will be owner-occupied.
And, and do you, I assume, because you'll need financing, there is a projected sale price on these units?
Not yet, but there will be. Not yet, but there will be.
Okay, what's, what's anticipated, do you know?
I don't know yet. I, I don't know.
Okay.
Because I haven't asked, quite honestly.
Yeah, no, no problem. That was pure curiosity when I was reading through this. Okay, I, I really liked Jerry's idea, Member Fischette's idea of, you know, giving that easement, or not the easement, giving, deeding that piece of property, you know, so the city at some point, whatever they choose to do, they at least have that access.
Yeah.
You know, they're not limited, they're not looking to potentially deal with a condo association and having to rely on a lot of people to get that. So, I thought that was an excellent suggestion by, by Member Fischette. And I, I, I think that should be part of the approval, I think, is, is that should be part of it. I did see that, and you guys mentioned it, there's a problem down in that area and driving that area was ridiculous, okay? I swear it was a private way, all right, because it doesn't look like it was plowed or anything. You know, you really needed a, a four wheel drive Jeep to get to and from that, that site. But you, you mentioned that there's a sewer backup. Is there, and you mentioned that hopefully it'll work and that there is, there's sensors. Is there any sort of backup to that sensor system? Because all I can think of is, oh, the, the one sensor is on the fritz and then you have potentially sewage going into the system and then potentially into the canal.
Right, so it's actually not necessarily a sewer issue.
Okay.
More of a stormwater issue.
Okay.
It's just they're combined.
Gotcha.
So, whenever, it's never just sewer, when, when it's not raining, there's never a problem.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's when the rain is contributing to the catch basin systems. To answer your question, if the entire system fills up and overflows like it could tomorrow.
Yeah.
It would go to the lowest spot, which would be the canal, okay? There's a grading between the buildings such that that's where the water would go, where it would go today.
Yep.
So, we're maintaining that same connectivity to the canal in case that happens. Hopefully it never does, but if it was to happen, that's where it would go and that's where it goes today.
You're talking runoff, not sewer?
It's.
It's both.
Combination of both. I, I think the best way is, let's say the sewer is 20% of the flow and the other 80% would be stormwater. So, it, it can happen. It happens throughout all of Lowell, where these low points are, and it happens in Lawrence, you hear about it, and they happen every once in a while, but that, we're saying that when that happens, that water will not be going into our units. We're going to be slightly elevated. We're going to have a path for that water to go if it's, wants to go to the canal and we've accommodated for it, so.
Now.
Oh, the other part of your question.
Yep.
You can manually shut the, this, this is going to be a gate valve that's actuated electronically, but you can manually shut that gate valve if needed.
If needed, if it's emergency.
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, so one of the things, stormwater and wastewater mentioned is, is they would like to meet on that final design and my guess was, is it has to do with whatever you're proposing, what you were telling us all about, right? Is that what it is?
So, we've had three very productive meetings. One after we submitted, but two prior to submitting because we didn't want to submit a design that wasn't going to meet their approval.
Yep.
We know that we need, we know that we're going to have approximately six to 10 months to really provide a detailed construction drawing to make sure that everything is the way that everyone wants it to be because the preliminary designs for the, for the stormwater separation project were just recently submitted in late December. So, that's where this is coming together at a inopportune time, but in, in, in an opportune time because when we're, when they're getting ready to do their final designs, which could be in a year, they'll already have incorporated this critical section to know that we're not putting anything that's going to be in the way of that separation project.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer. Once again, I just want to thank the developer and their attorney for looking out for the city of Lowell. Really like this project, really like its parking and I think it will certainly help this area. It definitely, this area needs some TLC. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tenzer. Ms. Waka, any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions. I will say that aesthetically, it's very pleasing. I think that it will be an even more attractive site once Clemente Park restorations are implemented. And your willingness, as Member Tenzer had mentioned, to meet the conditions that the city has set forth is admirable. I, I think it's a great project and as previous members mentioned, much needed in that area.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saab, any questions, comments?
I'm familiar with the, the area and excited to see as well. I think it's one of those places that.
Thank you. I know Jerry alluded earlier to the comments that we did receive from, from staff with, Peter was here with us. And the first thing that jumped out at me was when he gave us the color drawings of what they're going to do to the park.
Yeah.
You know, and talked about how they're implementing, implementing 1.8 million to renovate the park by 2025. So, I think, obviously, by all the renovations in the park really ties in this project because, I mean, obviously the park needs some work and then obviously with a project like this, you have the ability to use the park a lot more than if, if the conditions are not improved at the park. When I did go down there and take a look, as Attorney Tenzer said, it was tough because, you know, the cars were parked there, the snow, they were all plowed in, they weren't moved, it's tough to get there, you had to turn around. Your sign actually for the site was behind another car, so it was hard to find the site to look at first. Because you know, we always go look at the site.
I know.
I mean, you've been here long enough and I know that we do do our diligence before our meetings and like, okay, where's the site? If it's not, we call staff. Where's this, where's the sign? Where's the sign? And then I, when I was down there, and I mentioned to Jerry and staff, really, I remember doing that site visit years ago. This project came in and obviously didn't go forward, but I'm, down there, I'm like, I've been here before and it wasn't for the auto body part, so I'm glad to see this being developed. It's nice to see, you know, how we did the approval at the Boys and Girls Club and how that, they want to tie that canal all in in the back and how you'll be going by the Boys and Girls Club and hopefully, as you say, in the future with that canal walkway, it'll be great for the residents of this unit to have that ability.
It would be beautiful if it happens.
Yeah, yeah. And, and. I understand.
Think about it, think of how quickly you could get to the downtown from there if that now walkway is in place, right? It's, I mean, it'd be terrific, it really would be. I hope it does happen.
Place should be access to the judicial, judicial center and all that, all that stuff that's open up right down there.
Yep.
And a lot of the progress that we approved recently right down the street from there. So, so I know looking at the staff, you have to go to conservation because what do you have, one, one of the units is in the hundred year plan?
Corner of, of the last, most easterly unit is within, the corner of the building is within the floodplain. Matt has done calculations on the site plan to show the compensatory storage. So, we will be dealing with Conservation Commission on.
That's on the far right, you're saying, is that what?
Yeah, yep, Boys Club side.
So, obviously, I know we talked about the condition about giving you the deed, whether the city wants it or not, so maybe if it was like deed and or easement, if you get the language and an and or maybe so that way it doesn't tie your hands one way or the other because.
That makes sense.
As lawyers, as you know, it's a gift, you still have to have somebody accept it.
Yeah, right.
Even though you're donor, don't eat.
Right.
Through, through property law, we all recall, but, so I'd say if we do either or, so that way if we say, give it to the city and the city comes out and says, no, we don't want it, and then everything stops because by then, if they don't want it, that could be down the road somewhere and then, no, no offense, but if you're out of the picture, the condo association's there, how are they going to handle?
Yeah, no, I understood, absolutely, I agree 100%.
You know, so I mean, at least if the and or language comes in, you're talking about the access is granted to them one way or another, whichever they proceed, whichever way they want. So, that way you don't get later like, no, we don't want it and, well, does it affect the site plan? Because it's not, the condition is met. But I was happy to see that you had them okay from the fire department today. When we got the email about the fire department, I'm happy to see that.
Yeah.
And that's why I asked the questions about the no parking because, like you said, taking that corner is pretty tight now. But like you say, as Matt explained, the duplex and the, and the driveway, you know, as long as you put those parking spots, the no parking spots in, I think that would, you know, as long as it satisfies transportation and the fire department.
Mm-hmm.
I'm always on board as long as those two key implement is important. Because going down there now, I mean, like, it's tough as you make that turn right there. Yeah. But again, I want to, I thank Peter, I think he did a great job on doing all the comments and he gave us the color renderings on, on different parts of the site. And you indicated, I know you, you wanted to work with the, the landscaping plan with the city.
Yes.
I have no problem with that. And, yeah, I, I think it'd be a nice project, so I wish you well with it and I think, I think it's going to come out nice, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from any board members? So, this is just for the site plan, so we only need one vote this evening?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions. That the snow will be removed off the premises as warranted to ensure vehicle access to the units. A strip of land on the eastern side of the property to be deeded or an easement to be granted to the city of Lowell to ensure access for the future. Final landscaping design to be approved by DPD. Applicant to continue to work with the city engineering department and the city stormwater management team. That the applicant work with the city to restrict parking on public roadway where necessary, roadways where necessary, and no parking signs to be posted on the south side of the access road.
So, one comment, Member Fischette, with regard to the easement and or deed, could we just reference the 12 and a half foot?
12 and a half foot strip of land on the eastern most easterly side, sure, absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
Otherwise, everything is agreeable to us.
I agree. Okay, great.
Member Fischette, should we put as far as the no parking on that strip so people can get in and out? Should we put that as part of, and we did it on another project, I think you put it as part of the homeowners, should be part of the homeowners that they can't park along that, that line.
Right, right, yeah, it would, it would be posted, well, it would be posted by signage and I guess would be incorporated, yeah, incorporated into condominium docks, sure, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Attorney Tenzer. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, the site plan is approved, five in favor and none against. We wish you well, good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving along on the agenda, do any board members have any comment? I think none.
Peter, you dropped a couple of pieces of paper here. So, any update?
Just one comment, I'm going to agree with you as far as, one of the things that we see week in and week out is that the, the staff at DPD, as much as I tend to butt heads with them on certain issues, they do a great job of getting all of the people from all of the departments, getting responses. And I know it must be difficult. It must be challenging, but it, it is much appreciated and we can't do our job without that. So, that was a good, good comment, I just wanted to follow up on that.
I mean, the fact how we added, what's being done to the park was very, very helpful. I mean, showing us the, the.
Absolutely.
How the renderings on that, I mean, looking at what the park's going to be like and like, oh, wow.
Yeah.
That's going to, you know, as a homeowner who wouldn't be moving into there, seeing all those things being done to the park.
Absolutely.
Really getting the center and look at the money that they want to put in starting this year.
Yeah.
You know, instead of like down the road, like the canal in the back, where they're talking about money already approved for this year.
Sure. Now, they mentioned ARPA funds, 1.8 in ARPA funds. My concern was, is are we reliant on the whims of Washington or are they funds already collected and we have them?
Yeah.
I was curious about that because, you know, it's such a beautiful design.
Right.
And you'd hate to see it go to waste, but.
Yeah.
It sounds like that might be kind of up in the air too.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any further comments? If not, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have adjourned, good night, thank you everybody.
All righty. How's the week going for you, Lucy?
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay, well, yeah.
Our honor. I said it again, twice.
I left my phone in.